To look at the field of little, little leaguers, all dressed in their brand-new uniforms, eager to start the season. And the catchers always make your pitch look good, so that is most fun. Meeting KK Clark. Now, some of you may not recognize her name, but again, thank you Fiona and Steph for inviting me to your school. KK Clark was the Olympic water polo player who won the Olympic water polo, she's part of the team who won the Olympics this summer. And she had graduated from Sacred Heart. She came to give an inspirational speech to the students at Sacred Heart, and we were there to give her a proclamation as Vice Mayor and Mayor. Some of the fun things about being Mayor and Vice Mayor and representing our great town of Atherton. National Night Out, this was our third annual, and I got to introduce and welcome everyone after Commander Wade gave his welcome remarks. That's always been, it was the biggest ever, right? The annual Easter egg hunt, well, that's always a Mayor and Vice Mayor event. Isn't that fun, walking around with a bullhorn and everybody's waiting for you to start the hunt. All the little children dressed in their Easter refinery and their Easter egg baskets, all decked out, and you say, "Start the hunt," and there you go. That's so much fun. Giving awards at the Library Festival for the Summer Reading Program was such a fun event for me. That was the first time I had ever done that. And then we did have an interesting event, the first one, and it had been organized last year when Rick was Mayor, the Town and Gown Event that hosted at Menlo School. And all the ten schools in our, in our district here came, and we talked, it was just a meet and greet, and to share, and to share issues and concerns and policies. I had the great privilege to present a video slideshow of our new town center to let them know what we were doing. Those are just some of the fun things. When I looked back on my goals for 2016, there were three main projects. The Civic Center project, health and safety of the residents, and good fiscal management. Let's look at goal number one, the Civic Center project. I have to say that because of the hard work of the resident-led Civic Center Advisory Group, the outreach to residents through several public meetings and lots of private, small group meetings allowed public input at every stage of the process. And with guidance from the staff and the architect consultants and collaboration with council along the way, the design of the new Civic Center is nearly complete. Actually, completion of the design and development phase is projected to be presented to council January, at the January council meeting. Actually, I think it would have been presented at our regularly scheduled December meeting, but we had travel conflicts, and so that meeting's canceled and we're having this meeting today. The fundraising activity for the Civic Center has increased and gained momentum in the last couple of months, and we're hoping and expecting to reach our goal of 10 million by the end of the year, but that is still short of the full amount needed. So, first quarter of 2017, council's going to be looking at financing enhancement measures and fundraising to continue. I still have high hopes that we can fund most of the project with our private donations. So our goal number two was focused on the health and safety of the residents primarily, really for me, along El Camino Real, to reduce traffic speed and make crossing safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. So, my goal was to have the hybrid beacon installed at Almond Drawl and El Camino, and to have Selby Lane and El Camino intersection studied. Both of those goals were achieved. In August, we held a ribbon-cutting ceremony with Menlo Park Fire District at the Almond Drawl Fire Station, inaugurating the first-ever Hawk Beacon. The, it's a pedestrian bicyclist-activated stoplight essentially to cross the dangerous Camino Real. And it was because of the partnership with the fire district, 50% paid by them, 50% paid by us, that helped us to afford to pay for the beacon. We appreciate our partnership with the fire district, and we look forward to continuing to work together in these, this way. Caltrans likes the Hawk Beacon so very much that they plan to install at least 13 more along the El Camino in the San Mateo County region. And you know what? We are getting the first two of them that they are putting and paying for in our El Camino corridor. One on Alejandra and one at Isabella, where we've had fatalities, and we are hoping, hopeful that that will help make that crossing much safer. In February, we met with the neighbors of the Selby Lane Intersection and presented four traffic calming plans, including a fully signalized intersection. So, we're hoping that we'll be able to get some grant, grant funds for that and work with the other jurisdictions to maybe make that a reality. As you may know, we've implemented the Bike Ped Master Plan, installing the bike sharrows in early of the year. As I tell you, I received negative and very positive feedback on them. You either love them or you hate them, but I think that overall, it's a, it's a great improvement for the people who use bicycles, they feel safer, and it is, it's an alert for the motorists that they need to share the road with the bicyclists. My third main goal was good fiscal management, and that was involving management and deployment of current general fund reserves into the necessary and neglected town infrastructure projects, such as the Marsh Road Channel. That had been a long planned for and long-studied project, and it was completed. It came in under budget and pretty much on time schedule before school started. Although the traffic was a mess during the three-month construction, our staff rose to the occasion and dealt with all the residents' inconveniences. So now we have a beautiful new channel with water flowing freely and a sturdy new guardrail to prevent cars from going into the drink that the district has to pull out. So other goals that were on my list that we have completed are Quiet Zone Crossing at Fair Oaks, the Atherton 2020 Home Energy Efficiency Earth Day Event, which was an amazing event put on by the Environmental Programs Committee with over 72 high school students participating in the environmental challenge. It was an amazing, hard event to put on with a lot of success. Our climate action plan was approved by council, and we will then start implementing portions of it this coming year. For noise reduction, oh my goodness, that really can all-consuming, I can't even go into all of it, but needless to say, progress has been made, and I will continue to work to reduce overhead aircraft noise from Surf Air and also from the San Francisco Airport arrivals due to the implementation of the next-gen procedures. Needless to say, this year will go down in my history book as one of the busiest but most rewarding of my entire council tenure. But I have no delusions that I was responsible for any of this. I have no delusions that my efforts, or really even the efforts of all of our council people, were solely to, to the credit of it. It was because of our staff. And if you bear with me for a minute, I want to acknowledge and give heartfelt thanks to our awesome and amazing staff who has helped us to see around corners into the future while taking care of the day-to-day operations of our town. Our City Manager, George Roberts, whose experience, leadership, and vision has kept us moving forward with good heart, measured pace, measured temperament, and follow-through of goals set in force that we would not have accomplished the many things that we have done this year without his leadership. The man never sleeps, he's always on his computer, blogging, answering emails, and texts. Thank you so much, George. Teresa De La Santa, our Assistant to the City Manager and City Clerk, is literally the glue that keeps us all together. She knows everything, you go and talk with her and you'll get the, the story and reassurance about what's going on. Judy Heron, our Deputy City Clerk, is the face of our town at the post office front desk. Thank you Judy for your cheerful greeting and your helpful spirit. Then we have Bill Connors and Jennifer Larson, our City Attorney Team. We get a twofer with Bill and Jennifer. Thank you guys for your good legal advice and guiding us through the sticky wickets of the Brown Act and other legal pitfalls. And we have Robert Baron III, our Finance Director. Robert, thank you so much for all of your hard work and your accounting acumen and keeping all of our numbers together. It's a big job, and with your staff, Noi and Amanda, that's been a great asset for us. Then we want to go and our awesome police sergeants, officers, dispatchers, and our Commander Joe Wade, who has stepped into the chief's position during his absence for many months, so thank you so much. There's not a month that goes by that I do not get a letter, a memo, an email from a resident thanking us for your services and how professional you treat everyone, going above and beyond the call of duty to treat our residents in a special way, in a professional way. Thank you, thank you so much.
Pleasure.
The sad news is that we had to accept our Chief Ed Flint's resignation this year. He's retiring last month at a lovely reception at Councilmember De Gois' home. Chief Flint came to our town five years ago at a crucial time, and his leadership and standards of excellence has been a very positive influence on our PD staff. I will miss Chief personally, I'm hopeful that the next Chief will be able to continue that level of excellence. Then we have our awesome Public Works Superintendent Steve Tyler, who's not here today, but he usually is. He's been with the town for such a long time that if you want to know anything about anything in the park or along the channel, or really anything anywhere, just ask Steve. He has a great staff, Stally, David, and Helen, and they all do so much for us. Mike Cashewaki, Public Works Director and Inner West Group Coordinator. Mike, your years of experience in traffic management and working with Caltrans, Caltrain, SFPUC, you really know the ins and outs, and you make it look easy, but I know it's because of all of your years of experience. And thank you for having the heart for our town to help us get through the maze of that bureaucracy. I appreciate it. And our new town manager, Town Engineer Marty Hanneman, who is working, excuse me. Town Engineer Manager, I saw the ER and, you know. Anyway, he's working on the Civic Center, he's providing expert advice for us. But I cannot leave out Lisa Costa-Sanders, who's our Town Planner, and her staff, who's been with the town longer than I can remember. Work with the Planning Commission, Environmental Programs, and council is invaluable because of her love and understanding of the town's culture and history, and her professional advice is worth a lot. But last, but certainly not least, I want to thank my council colleagues for your dedication to the town as an elected official. As a council member, we have set policy, we've looked at the big pictures, we've studied, planned, debated, with thoughtful discourse and collaborative consensus. Not always in full agreement, but with respect for each of us and others' points of view. We've initiated work and accomplished many, many good things for our residents. Thank you. And thank you also for all the fun that we've had this year. It's been really fun. I think we've laughed and we've joked and we've poked fun at each other in a good way. It really has truly been a joy and a privilege to serve the residents of the town of Atherton as your Mayor. I promise to continue to do my best in all that I do as your elected official for four more years. Thank you. (applause) All right, so now, what do you do?
Now, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of Mayor.
So I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Mike Lumprous to be the Mayor for 2017. Mike comes with a pedigree of experience in politics, but he also comes with a probing mind, the ability to gain consensus between stakeholders, and think outside the box. He's measured, and he's thoughtful, and I can't think of anyone else that should be Mayor in 2017. May I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a second. And I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. So, Mike, congratulations. (applause) We're just gonna switch places, okay? I like moving.
(inaudible)
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 Okay, nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Mayor for the town of Atherton. It's gonna be, why, I guess I would, I can offer a nomination myself of Mr. Kerry Weest, if there's a second.
Second.
Any other nominations for the position of Vice Mayor? Okay, let's hold it. Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. May I have the vote, I hear, the vote on the nomination of Kerry Weest to serve as Vice Mayor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Kerry, congratulations.
(inaudible) I know you like your corners a bit.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Well, I think it's my opportunity to give some comments about the next year as the incoming Mayor. And first, I'd like to thank my fellow council members, I appreciate your vote of confidence. And as Elizabeth mentioned, I think we are, we are a good team, and I feel fortunate and proud to be a part of it. But particularly, I want to thank Elizabeth, I think she did a wonderful job as Mayor, and I'm, again, privileged to be able to follow up on such a well-run path. I also want to thank our families, because, a number of them are here. We sit up here and, and we are doing this because we enjoy it, for whatever reason, we, we, you know, get a sense of fulfillment out of what we do up here. Our families put up with a lot of sacrifices, and I don't think we can thank them enough, so on behalf of the council, I can thank all our families. And in particulars, I, I do want to thank Stephanie and Fiona and Claire, who are here, and I'll mention Dan and Caroline, who are in other parts of the country right now, but I thank all our families and my, and the support they've offered. (applause)
Would you just thank Joe?
I will thank Joe, all of us, thank you Joe.
Thank you very much.
As for the town, 2017 is gonna be a busy year for us. You heard what we've done, what was accomplished in 2016, and I think the pace is picking up, I think 2017 will be busy. But the agenda is pretty well-set. I'm sure there'll be some surprises that come down the road, but I don't see the council initiating a lot of dramatic changes in the direction we're going in. We laid out our priorities over the last few years, and they're the right priorities. 2017 is a year that we're gonna continue to implement the plans that we laid out as a community. Our direction is fixed, and we are traveling down the road. As Elizabeth mentioned, we have our master plans laid out, we're gonna continue to work to implement those master plans, and there are a number of other major issues that we have been working on and will continue to work on. For example, I will also mention a safer and better Almanada Real. The rail quiets on us, and Arista is here, it's a big issue for a large number of us, we want to get that done. High-speed rail is something that's around, will continue to be around, will continue to play our, our role in making sure that, if it's done, it's ever done properly. Airport noise, another issue that we've mentioned is we'll be hiring a police chief in the town this year, and that's a significant thing for this town, so. With all of those issues, there are two other important issues that I want to mention that we will address this next year. We will make big strides in the Civic Center, and we have to decide whether to zero the old parcel tax later in the year. In both of these issues, we are all determined to listen closely to the voices of the towns, towns amended women. For the Civic Center, it's important to note that a tremendous amount of work has already been done over the past several years. We owe a great deal to the residents and the staff who have gotten as farther than we have been over the last 50 years towards building a new Civic Center. And let there be no doubt, we need a new Civic Center. Our current facilities are not acceptable, and we should not ask our residents and employees to continue to use an inadequate and increasingly unsafe facility. Atherton Now has done an excellent job at a very difficult task. The group has helped the community raise millions of dollars, and has funded much of the work done to date. We would not have a plan or a path forward without their efforts, and we owe them deep thanks. However, we must acknowledge that Atherton Now will not raise all the money we need to finish the Civic Center project. We have been operating under the constraints imposed by Mezrel, a measure defined by the Town Council in 2012 and approved by the voters of Atherton. Those constraints require the Civic Center to be built primarily with privately raised funds, and they prevent the use of general fund monies on the project. Those constraints have proven unrealistic. Despite the best efforts of Atherton Now and the generosity of our residents, we need to consider revising or reversing Mezrel. Starting next month, as you heard Elizabeth mention her comments, as a council and as a town, we must shape a new public-private partnership. We will begin working on that in our next council study session. We have library funds set aside to build our new library, and speaking for myself, I am determined to work with the council and the town to figure out a prudent, financially responsible way to fund the full Civic Center. And we will build a town center that strengthens our community and one that we can be proud of. Later in the year, the council will look at whether to renew the current parcel tax. To make that decision, we will look at funding and budgeting options, and ultimately, that decision will be made by the voters of Atherton. I can say with confidence that the council will do its homework before making any recommendation to the voters. And as I said earlier, that's a busy year, and it's laid out for us. But on, on top of those things, there's at least one more proactive one that I plan to pursue in my role as Mayor. I will work with our neighbor communities to help improve communications on development projects that directly affect Atherton. Large projects near our town's borders increase traffic and cause other impacts on our residents. Currently, our only real input into these projects comes from filing legal or regulatory challenges, and, and that's a breakdown of the system, we need a better way to occur. I plan to work with our neighboring communities on a regular basis to discuss projects in common service. We are a residential semi-rural community in the heart of the world's greatest economic growth engine. That growth is wonderful, but the potential negative consequences present quality-of-life issues for our community. The biggest of those issues is traffic, is more and more people cut through our town. We've already started to do some of this cooperative work. By way of example, our Transportation Committee will be holding a joint meeting with the Transportation Committee at Menlo Park. Hopefully, that's a step to coordinating and mitigating some of the consequences of the tremendous growth that our region is creating. That will be an area of focus for me over the next year. And finally, and really in closing, a special request to my fellow council members and neighbors, let's assume good intentions in all our actions this year and make sure that we can disagree without being disagreeable. I will work hard to conduct meetings where the discussions are direct and respectful, and a big part of that will be respecting our time. I hope to build on the culture of civility, collegiality, and the effectiveness this council has had over the past several years. And just again, I feel fortunate to represent the town and proud to be part of this council. 2017 is gonna be a great year, and I look forward to contributing to it. So, thank you. (applause)
We have public comments for anyone?
Public comments?
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
Let me just, I don't think we have public comments, but anybody in the public that has any comments on any matters not on the agenda, now would be the time to make those Seeing none, I will, we've had our report out of close session, and I'll move to the City Manager's report.
I think it's very members of the council, we have a question for you, it's short because of the advanced-up regular council meeting, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselors, any questions from the council?
(inaudible)
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 On page two, just to bring attention that we do have the joint meeting with the Fire Board, with the town hall, reception hall, but, the medical services discussion, is this, can we get a consensus from the council whether or not we may want to bring that up, reorganize it? And I wanted to ask about this, the text that was in highlight, italics, is that former President Solano's actual words, or was he, is that something he?
That was an email that he received from John Ogle.
From John Ogle, just kind of explaining about what that is.
Correct, and then, as we sat down, you and I sat down with Chief Shephahammon and Solano, we talked about the order of the agenda, and this is the way it was set with the understanding that the body when they need can reorganize that agenda if they need to. And we did tell them that the item, the medical response to JPA was an important one that the council may want to hear, and having it at the end, this is a very packed agenda for the two-hour time limit that we have for the meeting, the Fire Board has their meeting following that at seven at the end, so they have a dead stop.
So, yeah.
Just to follow up on that, just so everybody knows, in the City Manager's report, there's a quote from John Ogle, who's the Executive Director of the Medical Services Group, and refers to that group being managed as a JPA, and there being a representative from Atherton on that JPA, and frankly, I had not been aware that this JPA existed until you sent out your report. Who is the representative?
I believe it's a representative from the Fire District on behalf of the agencies that they represent.
Ah.
That would make sense. His quote says, "The JPA has a board made up of representatives of each city, town, fire district, and county."
Correct, so the cities and towns that they're, that he's referring to are those outside of the Fire District.
Okay.
It's unclear.
So we should probably talk about it, find out. Find out who it is, and then make sure that we input into it. Find out who it is and then make sure that we put into it. Okay?
Okay, good. That's all I have.
Questions? No? All right. Community organization roundtable report. There's no report coming from that, so I'll move to the consent counter. Any council member have any items to remove or comments on any item on the consent count? There are only two items on the consent count. Either item. Would entertain a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. And any member of the public have any comment on the consent counter or wish to remove any item from the consent counter? Seeing none, I'll pull it back. Motion, wait a second? Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
No vote, they'll read.
Now, is that up? All right, okay. Okay. Moving on, the regular agenda. We go to item number 10, which is an update in the Atherton Fair Oaks Quiet Zone. Mr. Keshwati?
Mayor Lemper, members of the city council. Your staff report outlines educational and monitoring activities performed by staff since the establishment of the Atherton Fair Oaks Quiet Zone in June of this year. In addition, over the past several days, staff has had conversations with both the federal rail administration, the regional grade crossing manager, to learn more about enforcement responsibilities and process, as well as an informal conversation with Caltrain regarding the rail horn sounder report, which is part of your staff report, which we also sent to Caltrain several days ago for their review. The primary purpose of this evening's report is for the city council to review and to discuss it and to provide any additional direction to staff.
Any questions from council? May I throw out for the public for any comments from the public on this issue? I'd say that, coming back to the council, Mr. Keshwati?
So, I think that we made a very significant act to establish this quiet zone. It is a leadership role that we played in the county. And it has significantly improved the residents' lives who live here, that train stop. And I know that we're very focused on improving the safety of walk-ins and improving that area also. Given the report that we've received from the consultant, I think there is a disturbing amount of horn blasting north of Fair Oaks. I'm not even focused on anything south of Fair Oaks because it runs into the Watkins Road area and other issues. But north of Fair Oaks, it's clear that under the federal railroad administration rules, there is absolutely no reason other than an emergency, like if somebody may be on the tracks or something like that where the horn needs to be blown. There's no other reason to do it. And in some cases, according to the report, there are certain trains that seem to be blowing their horns every time they come through there, which indicates to me that there may well be certain engineers that are intentionally ignoring this quiet zone. And I think it's incredibly important to us, and not just for Atherton, but for the rest of the peninsula, to enforce this. I think the right way to do it initially is to go to Caltrain and to talk to Caltrain about it. My recommendation, and I take it you guys are looking for some recommendation, my recommendation on it would be for at least this month, we go to Caltrain. And I've tried to press the issue with the FRA right now. And if Caltrain is responsive, and I know there was an article in the press, and there was a responsive comment from Caltrain that indicated that they wanted to work with us to make sure that the quiet zone is properly enforced. And they publicly indicated that in the past. We need to hold their feet to the fire lines. It's very important. And if we don't get a response, by a response, we don't get these horns to stop blowing how they are in about 25% of the time by the end of the month, I think we need to then in January look to go to the FRA and go up as high as we need to go up in the FRA to get the rules properly enforced. Because they're certainly being properly enforced elsewhere in the country.
Well, how long, George, did you say, it's not even a moment ago that it was going to take Caltrains to do their analysis of what they're planning on doing? As they said, they would do it in a couple of papers.
I mean, with the recent comment that they would have people out here checking out. I don't know. Mike, do you know when they're supposed to be here? The group that was here before, I think, was connected to HSR.
Yeah, I was, I'm not worried about it.
From his comments in the papers, and we'll find out.
Yeah, so.
Did other comments?
Well, my only comment was, we need to get them to take corrective action. So, it's going to take them a week or two to do their analysis and then go to their black boxes and then speak to their engineers. They should give us a status report. I think it would be important. And then, but I agree with, you know, we've put in the time and the effort and to do this thing, and we want to get the benefit out of it. And if it's specific, a few guys that are just trying to not follow the rules, then I think that they need to take some action on that.
I just, I, I mean, just for everyone, I think personally, I think it's very disappointing that they're not complying more. And I don't think it's a policy of Caltrain. I think there's individuals. And part of the reason why it's so disturbing is Atherton in particular, our very longtime council member Malcolm Dudley was one of the people who helped form Caltrain, protected Caltrain in those early years when Caltrain was under attack from others with other transportation agendas. And Atherton stood behind Caltrain through that whole period. It's very disappointing that it appears that there's some tolerance of people that are disrespectful of this quiet zone process, which is an open process. I understand it's the first one in San Mateo County and on the peninsula, but it's important.
Can I just make a comment? I just, it seems like there's some conflicting stories, not stories, opinions about what is, what is policy of Caltrains and, you know, having to blow before the grade crossing, pedestrian grade crossing and a station. And it's not, so having the station there and the pedestrian grade crossing, even though we have the quad gates, which when we put them in, I remember when we put them in, Mr. Janz, that we were supposed to qualify for the quiet zone, which we think that it does. But I think in Caltrain's organization, they may not acknowledge that. There are some people in the organization that feel that, you know, there is a safety issue because you're coming, you're approaching a station, even though the majority of the time that station is not being used or there's a pedestrian grade crossing. So, I think that we need to get with Caltrain to clearly understand and to clearly plead our case. I think we have a public, we haven't, did we open?
We opened and closed it, unfortunately. Hang on a minute.
So, I'm actually the council representative on rail. And I would like to say expert, sometimes you get, you drown in trains. But some people would say drown in train noise. But what I'd like to say, that this is an example of the council and the town being responsive and the city manager being responsive to the cries from the general public that have complained about noise related to, you know, the idea of a quiet zone sounds simple, but it's the first one in this county. And creating a quiet zone almost implies that we're never going to hear trains. So, there's going to be a learning curve on all parties. And, you know, we're working to try to work in that curve to make sure that we can get corrective compliance. But it doesn't happen overnight, and we are taking measures. And this was our, the city manager and the council was aware that we were going to do a study to try to figure out, you know, what the noise levels were and if there was a violation. Because we have received a share of telephone complaints. I'm sure every one of us up here has received some calls related to train noise. The horns are blowing. So, now we've got a little bit of a benchmark to go ahead and utilize to go back with the powers-to-be, Caltrain and the FRA if necessary, to try to get full compliance as we move forward with the civic center design and everything else. We obviously want all of the parties involved here to be compliant so that we can hopefully make a few more residents happy, so that's it.
Any issue with other votes? Comment one more time? Yeah. The member of the public that wants to speak. See any issue with that, council? No? There's a member from the public who'd like to speak? Please let him speak.
I wasn't going to speak, but I wanted to address Councilmember Lewis's comment. And I wanted to say unequivocally, the quiet zone was established properly, legally, et cetera. And there is unequivocal proof that there are no pedestrian crossings. Unequivocal, that can be proven beyond a shadow of a doubt. We addressed that during the 60-day comment period. We have absolute proof. And that entails the California Public Utility Commission's own general orders. So, we are clear on that. There is no sounding for pedestrian crossings. They don't exist. The crossing for pedestrians that are part of the Fair Oaks Lane crossing with the gates, that is not considered a pedestrian crossing because that is integral to the public highway rail grade crossing. But there are no other pedestrian crossings. There are no other pedestrian crossings within the quiet zone. And I can prove that beyond a shadow of a doubt. Thank you.
So, my, I think, what I heard actually is, or at least what I'd say is, we now have data, part of the study, the study gives us the data. So, we're moved from anecdotes to data. And I think it's important to, as Councilmember Keshwati said, to engage Caltrain and then to wrap in the last couple of comments. Let's find out if they agree or disagree with those. I don't think we know. I mean, there seem to be inconsistent comments from them. And I think our goal in the next short term ought to be to be as clear as we can. Do we agree or do we not agree on whether there's a crosswalk here, on whether, why they're blowing their horn? And I think that would be the first step. And I think it would be very important to get clarity, to tee it up, to make the next decision on whether we want to go to the FRA or where we go from here. But I think, it feels to me like there is agreement amongst the council that this is an important thing that we want to enforce and that we want to do whatever we can to minimize the unnecessary blowing of horns out there.
And it sounds like there's agreement that we go sort of deal with it with Caltrain.
Yeah.
It's like, at least for this month, then we'll deal with the FRA. We'll decide what to do afterwards.
Mike, is that, is that, get to what you need?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Terrific. If that moves us to item 11. Marty, do you want to? That's the civic center. I should mention, because everybody's to help clean this up.
We had a lengthy meeting Monday, so two nights ago on the fairies. And I'm not sure what we made, and I still want to address that.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Nice to be here today. Yeah, I just want to provide a few updates. As you mentioned, Mayor, we had a long meeting on Monday, a joint meeting with the CCAC. Prior to that, we had the meeting with the CCAC regarding the landscaping plans. And we spent 90 minutes, hour and a half on that. The committee had more comments on the landscape plans, so that's actually going to come back to the CCAC in January. And then after that, the plan is to bring those to you on January 18th at your meeting on landscape plans. And then following the joint meeting, like you mentioned, we had the decisions from the council on all the sustainability items, the 14. So, thank you for that, for giving us the clear direction on that, that were very helpful for the consultants to move forward on the design of those items. So, I think we got past that, and we're moving forward on a number of different areas now. Regarding, another item is with the SFPUC. Heard a direction the council provided on November 16th. We're going to start negotiations or discussions with them regarding the water line, the 36-inch water line that's out here, and revising the easements and bringing everything back to council at some future date for your consideration with all the negotiations, the pricing, and, you know, who pays for what, when's it going to happen, things like that. So, that's going to be beginning next week. I have those conference calls scheduled with the SFPUC. Regarding the current schedule, unfortunately, because we still have some issues with landscaping and other items that we're still working on. Another one is like phasing, you know, what happens when construction starts? Where does all the staff go? Do they go to their park? Do they go other places? Those are things we're still working on. So, right now, we're looking at having your 100% design development plans to the council at your February meeting and now your January meeting. So, apologize for that, Mayor, or former Mayor.
So, like, so February's after December, right? You know, January.
So, there's things, a lot of things coming together. And then, of course, the holidays and everything. So, we're looking at February to bring the 100% design development plans to you for your approval and hopeful authorization and to move into construction documents. And looking even further down the road, if everything goes as planned currently, we're looking at having the plans out to bid sometime in the summer. And then construction starting about a year from now is what we're looking for, so. But we'll provide next month on January, January being a more detailed schedule, project schedule. Will we bring forward the landscape plans that the CCAC is certainly reviewing at this point? And any other items that might be needed for council's review and approval. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the council then. Any comments from the council?
I will say, I felt that Monday's meeting was very productive. I think we drilled down quite a bit with our environmental components. I know that you guys hacked out some landscaping issues to get it. So, I'm really comfortable with where we're sitting. Unfortunately, we're losing a month, Marty. But January was a good month. We all plan on being back, doing stuff for January. I'm sure there will be plenty of things going on behind scenes. But I'm pleased with where we're sitting right now.
And I did want to just say real quickly, the Green Building Committee did an awesome job working on all those sustainability items, making that recommendation to the council with Clag Maradue presenting. I think it was just so helpful from our perspective, our staff, to have them do that. So, I really want to thank them for that all that.
A comment relating to the landscaping, if I can, and jumping into the interview. But I had the occasion to go to the Menlo Park Christmas tree or holiday tree lighting ceremony. And it's a wonderful occasion, and they've got a, they set up a stage, people sing carols, there's top chocolate and they light up the trees. It's a great community building event. And I don't believe that our landscape plans include this, but I think we might want to consider a similar tree, since we're developing this out now, but set a central place out there, where we could do something similar over time, where we could have, you know, a holiday tree ceremony to light it and do public events like that. Or we, where, someplace similar.
They could put on the pictures now.
I don't know, this is a, we're all. A permanent tree.
A permanent tree.
It wouldn't work too good on the footage.
But they bring in the White House.
Oh.
They have a real tree there. The Congress brings one.
I'll make sure that comes up at the January CCAC meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Since the CCAC had the thorough review of landscaping on Monday and didn't complete it, and will be having another in-depth review of landscaping at its meeting in January. It gives us the opportunity to really do some outreach to let residents know that they may be interested in the landscaping. Because we know we have plenty of people who are knowledgeable in this area. We've attempted to form a committee, but that didn't happen. So, maybe the staff can reach out.
We can send something out, the next time they come, you want to be able to play the part?
Yeah, that would be really nice. Because, you know, landscaping, just to tag on that. Excuse me.
He did say he was going to take the truck.
I know, I love it. So, through the chair. I, landscaping, the landscape plan that has been, continued to be presented to us has not been completely acceptable at all. And the design of the, the redesign of the deck and the ramp into the library was not well thought out and really not discussed at any of the previous CCAC meetings. So, I think all that needs to really have some focus. You know, like we had the Green Building Sustainability Committee, really focus on all the You know, like we had the Green Building Sustainability Committee, really focus on all the sustainability adults and items. We need, we need a group of some professionals, you know, like we have with the Green Building people. So we'd like to ask if we can push that through with the committee to get an ad hoc committee.
Please go to ad hoc committee to focus on the landscaping plans.
Yeah.
I have one additional comment. I mean, we weren't sitting and participating in it, but when we walked in, I guess they were talking about a fountain. And since during the drought, you know, we're not supposed to have a fountain. I would suggest that maybe discuss with the committee that as opposed to a fountain, that perhaps we talk to the Arts Foundation and see if they could look for a sculptor, sculpture or something like that, and do something, Nick was a very close thing to the art. Perhaps they could do something here as well, and we could participate or at the cost with them, they do, they find for most of all those things. So I think that would be better, that way we're not like.
And sculpture was, throwing out the idea of instead of a fountain in front of the Fair Oaks area, you know, that a large piece of artwork might be appropriate. So that's great to reach out to the arts.
Did we get some closure on the idea of a landscaping committee?
This is a suggestion, Councilmember Lewis, a city council ad hoc committee or resident ad hoc committee appointed by the city council?
Can I? Or a CCAC? Yeah, so we got here. Can I interject? Maybe if we do outreach and we do a joint CCAC and council, we can actually make some decisions. I know there's some concerns cost wise, because landscaping can go in a lot of different directions. So, you know, I mean, that may be one factor that would make this process go a little faster. And it appears we have a little bit of time in January, very little.
Marty, put that on the agenda when we, when we get on this one meeting.
So I don't think that's what Councilmember Mayor Vice Mayor recently suggested. He's suggesting that we do the outreach, do the ad hoc meeting, and in the break that you have to do that, get people involved, and then schedule a joint meeting with the city council and CCAC in January to discuss landscaping the next time it comes around.
Was that good from the people that would stand based on the ad hoc meeting?
I think that was sloppy, but yes, that's a concept.
I'm good with that. I think we tried that, you know, earlier with some outreach. And I know I sent out emails, I think Rick has sent out emails to people in the garden courts and things. And I think without actually soliciting and targeting some professional people that we know and say, we want you to be part of an ad hoc committee, you know, to kind of give it a little bit more form. I think just having them come and sit at a meeting and give input might not be as meaningful to them.
So through the chair.
Yeah.
So with that, I think one of the concerns would be time. So if we were to say that the landscaping issue is a, like, for example, the E components, a option, and then that way it will take more time to work with the committee over a period of time. And then we could use it as a draw because it's the last, and we're not going to, we can push landscape design because it's obviously going to have minimal effect on the overall stuff.
Not in terms of the lot of sustainability features and water retention issues and the project that have to be built in the face pit. That's, the landscape is actually what's delaying the completion of a hundred percent design.
So question, is the hardscape water retention stuff a hardscape item and not a softscape one? Because, well, I mean, I think we're really talking about surface stuff, correct? We're not talking about them making opinions about swells or retention devices, right? So it's all.
It's all of that, yeah, it's all of that.
Yeah, because the, the.
They're all, it's all interwoven, it's all, yeah.
What he presented, excuse me, through the chair, I just want to, what Marty, what was presented at the committee by Chris, those kind of burned, you know, irregular shapes, which were the detention swales with walk paths around it, was just odd.
Yeah, I know that.
It was really bad.
That was the first I saw that.
And so, you know, that was the first time anybody else seen that. And things like that are just kind of thrown at the committee without any input from, you know, anybody sitting down with them and saying, you know, let's, let's try to design something that is going to be nice. He clearly doesn't get the.
Well, we, yeah, we heard a lot of feedback after that.
Yeah, I understand.
So maybe the thing, just, I feel like we're a little bit of a disadvantage because frankly, this should have been done at the CCAC three months ago, and we didn't have that discussion. It just didn't, didn't have the support, didn't get done. So now we're a little bit stuck. And maybe the best way out of it is for staff to look at what components of the landscaping plan, and we're talking about a whole series of different types of things, hardscape, plant material, water issues, which of those unnecessary to complete the design development? Because we don't probably have to decide on all of the plant material to complete design development, probably.
The planting material is probably a little less urgent than the actual.
Well, I understand that. So maybe you guys could make a judgment about what are the critical issues we've got to decide by, in order to approve the whole thing in February. I think where we're going to have the most significant resident input is around planting material. And secondly, hardscape. And we can let them know, and they can come and comment at a meeting in January, it's a joint meeting or a CCAC meeting, on the hardscape issues, as long as WRNS tees it up to principal, you know, to start out at least focused on those. And I think we want to get to the approval of the plan by February, so.
Hopefully we'll get to there.
Yeah. But I think it's important that that meeting be a joint council CCAC. I think that new structure is working out well, and I think we all were getting it.
So you're adding more council meetings?
Adding CCAC.
So that'd be the January.
It was a very successful.
I haven't had a chance to hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item twelve. I will turn to our city.
I'm pretty sure you don't want to hear from that guy right now.
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am here before you again with the drone ordinance. If you remember, before, we talked about it briefly, took a little bit of input from council. We've put something together for your review. The purpose tonight is not to take action, but to get your comments. There are a few things that we weren't as clear on, want to see if you felt comfortable with the direction we were going. When you are, we will bring back a revised version, and then you will take action as appropriate. So I'll just highlight a few things. The primary issues that we took away from our first meeting were privacy, noise, and safety. There are some community-based standards that address those, are the ones that the FAA encourages us to look to, and we're sort of stuck with, but I think we like them. So those are in there with a few added elements where possible to bolster safety. One of those is the prohibition on model use of any recording capable of recording. Any camera, we tried to define it as broadly as possible, anything that can receive and transmit an image, whether it stores it or sends it to the cloud somewhere, any of those things, if they are on the camera, that would currently be prohibited. The solution that we were thinking, since many of them actually come with that capability when you buy it at the store, is to put a piece of tape, and that would make it incapable of recording and therefore legal under our ordinance. So love to hear your thoughts on that. Noise, we really looked at that and felt like with the noise ordinance already in place, we recovered. We also included one that's not in the community-based standards, and that's the daylight operation provision. Goes a little above and beyond what the FAA had recommended. Basically says from sunup to sundown is the only time you can operate that. So, you know, preventing your neighbor from, you know, before daylight, making any noise. Because I think you can hear them, especially around here where it's quiet. So I think though, there are a few of those in there, I'd love to hear your opinion on it. I did want to address, I got comments from the Academy of Model Aeronautics, which is the, I learned, sort of the main industry group that is lobbying for this, and they've been very influential in developing those community-based standards. I've had longer conversations with that guy over there, and even he was confused. So I'll, the way we do it is model, commercial, and public operation of drones. So it depends on how you're going to use it. Our ordinance, because we feel that we're very limited in how we can regulate the commercial and the public or governmental use, those are already governed by the FAA, there's very, very little we can do. In fact, I would argue there's nothing we can do besides just reiterate that we expect you to follow those standards in our town. We're really regulating just the model use. And I think I had some concern from a videographer who was concerned about his ability to do business in the town. And I assured him that is not what this ordinance is about, I think our ability to limit that. So for example, the camera prohibition would not apply to him. The only thing that would apply to somebody who wanted to videotape something in Holbrook Palmer Park, they would need to get a permit from the town first. So the other things, last thing I'll mention, we were a little uncertain on how you wanted to proceed with respect to Holbrook Palmer Park. We do have the ability to prohibit all use in the park. It's a little bit of a gray area, whether that would actually be upheld, but we can certainly limit it. So for now, it is, the way it reads is it's limited to the North Meadow, and I'd love to get your thoughts on that.
Questions, council?
I, can we regulate safety features that will get put on drones? Because if we're flying anything in a park that has blades, and really we, I've watched them, and when they crash and they hit somebody, I mean, if we don't have some precautionary measures, but then the flight board required an insurance policy if they're going to fly drones. I mean, do we have any other, any other, this is a public area.
So in the park, you have more leeway than in someone's backyard, particularly with respect to the model use. And I don't know exactly what the safety measures would be. They weigh, they can weigh quite a bit actually, some of those model ones. And I guess you could put on some kind of insurance requirement. I'm not sure exactly how that would work on a practical basis.
Because the larger ones have propeller guards, and, you know, I think that some requirement that is applied in public space, that we should, you know, make sure that we have some precautions or some safety measures put in the blades to protect the pilot because drones can go off target.
Is that the commercial permitted for one we're talking about?
The commercial ones, but, you know, I actually have been, I've actually watched drone races. And small ones go incredibly fast. And if I was over ten and technology was there today, I know what I'd be doing. So the problem is, is I do know what I would be doing, and parents will watch their kids to a certain degree, but those things will be gone, and things happen. And I just think that we have to have a little bit of an air to caution to hopefully, you know, prevent, you know, an accident. I was just not saying they'd require you to have that.
If you allow the model aircraft ones?
Are we still have questions or are we? Yeah, so let's keep it those are questions, just go around, just see if there are other.
So in your proposed ordinance, which is what's for us, I think,
Yeah.
you are proposing that drones are not allowed in the park except the North Meadow area.
That is correct.
And that they would be allowed in the North Meadow area during daytime so long as there are lions with the noise ordinance.
Because then no one was, then no one was available in that area, is what it says.
Yes.
It depends, because in commercial use, they still need a permit from us to do anything.
Period.
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 At any point in time.
If it's not a commercial use, but it's just a hobbyist, then they need to comply with all of the regulations that we have in there. And, and you put in there pretty much as much as we thought we could get away with it. But we're setting the after with other comments in the box, all of that as well.
So do we currently allow model airplanes, airplanes to be flown around in the park?
There's no prohibition.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there, there are none.
Do you, like, small ones, big ones?
Some are on the battlefield.
Yeah, there's currently no prohibition. And actually around, I looked around at all the jurisdictions that I would look at locally, and nobody has, except for Menlo Park, which recently enacted an ordinance that said no use in the parks except where specifically allowed.
So I'd like to do questions first, just sure, quite because of what we're doing today. Today, we've got a proposed ordinance in front of us, and really just looking for comments and direction, we're not, we're not doing any action.
Yeah, if you love it, I'd love to know that, if you'd like something changed.
Secondly, can you address this issue of redundancy and whether what we're passing is merely, is purely redundant federal law? What does that do?
Okay, so where it comes down to, the civil and the public use, the commercial and the government use, it's redundant. We are simply saying, if you're in this jurisdiction and you're flying it, we expect you to follow all applicable laws, and we cannot impose any additional, so.
But, but there's a reason for that. Because as people have heard recently, we don't, we cannot enforce federal law. But what we can do is if somebody is violating the federal law, we can make, we can try to make that illegal, to violate federal law. Not that we're going to enforce the federal law, or we're going to enforce our own law that says you can't violate federal, state, or local.
So as I've discovered, just to add on to that, and I've spoken with the two airports in our jurisdiction, and you know, there is, currently, you're supposed to give them notification if you're going to be flying within those five miles. And I said, what happens if you don't? Nothing. Is anybody letting you know? No. Well, what, within what time period? I don't know. So it's very, very loosey goosey, so I think what we're trying to do is give teeth to something that is pretty uncertain right now.
Through the chair, question.
Yes.
Can we require that there is a registration counter, that the city maintains a registration of all these drones? So that we, they're identifiable, so if one crashes and it's four houses away, that somebody can go up that drone one?
So we, we can't. And the reason why is because the FAA has already done that. It is a, across the board, whatever you want to use your drone for, there is a registration requirement. It is five dollars online, and anybody, it must be thirteen to do that, and it applies to absolutely everything for accountability purposes. Now, whether or not people actually do that, I don't, I don't know. They, for example, the AMA, you know, kind of the industry standard here, they have a know before you fly document that they try to give to everybody. I believe they might even come with your packet when you buy the drone, you know, some of that information. And it would have all these community-based standards, and they do try to make it very clear that, you know, try to educate their customers because they don't want to have these problems. They want it to go well, so there's less regulation.
As we heard the comments, any member of the public, oh, sorry, so what is our question?
One more question, yeah. So if I understand what you're suggesting in the ordinance with the park, just want to be clear, is that you're saying that drones would not be allowed to be flown anywhere in the park for any reason other than in the North Meadow? And to be able to be thrown and flown in the North Meadow, they need a permit from the city manager? Is that correct?
So not a hundred percent. So public use of drones, it's a very touchy issue, because it's government, it's for emergencies, there might be a fire, there might be a fugitive.
I, I'm accepting that.
So that is a very highly regulated area, they've given very few permits in that area, we're really not concerned about it. I have been silent as to that issue with the park, because I do not feel that we can control that.
Silent with respect to.
To the government use, public.
I'm just addressing.
Well, you asked if it applied to all types. So it applies within the park. We are limiting all use to the North Meadow. And within that area, if you are a model, you do not have to have a permit. If you are civil, you do. If you're making money there photographing an event, we need you to.
But if you are, through the chair, okay. If you are a private photographer and there's a wedding, or you're with an event, you come and you get a permit to take photographs for a certain period of time, and it doesn't have to be delegated to the North Meadow, it could be any place.
No, currently, it would be in the North Meadow.
It would just have to be the North Meadow.
You can expand that.
You couldn't expand the, the event garden.
Not as presently written. If you would like to, you absolutely can expand it.
Right, that's what you're proposing, because, yeah.
Let's, let's get, I think there's a lot of questions. Let's go to the public for any comments of the public on this proposal.
What's the North Meadow?
Good one. It's an area within the park, yeah, just a subset on the North Meadow. Good one. Uh, it's an area within the park, it's just a subset on the North Meadow.
On the north side.
On the north side.
Any other, um, comments from the, from the public? If not, just bring it back to the council, I know there's comments from the council, is there?
Yeah, so, um, first off, I like the, the ordinance, so thank you very much for the work there. Um, uh, two, two comments on it, um, I know that you said, hey, we're gonna stick with the noise ordinance, and we did talk about it in the, in the meeting. Um, these things are awful loud, and when the fire district was demonstrating theirs in the, uh, at the, uh, emergency response, uh, luncheon that they had a couple Saturdays ago. Um, it was very loud when they took off, it was one of the larger ones, and, uh, and the sound was very audible, all the way up to about a hundred feet. After a hundred feet, you couldn't hear it. Um, so, so I think that a restriction on cameras, because you're gonna have to, if you have any camera, you, when you're a hundred feet upwards, people can't hear it, obviously you're gonna be over any tree, so, so I like the restriction of the cameras. The North Meadow gives me some concern. First off, uh, there was the item about the, uh, the weddings that, uh, Councilwoman Lewis brought up, I mentioned to George earlier today. As well as this ordinance applies to these actual model airplanes, um, you know, fixed wing airplanes that, that take off. Uh, and they need some runway space, and they have to fly around. Now, in the North Meadow, uh, they fly a little bit lower, and in the North Meadow, there are those trees around that picnic area, so they won't be able to fly in there. So you're essentially telling those people who've been using the park that they can't use it. I would suggest that we consider moving it to the athletic field, um, area, which would then allow, uh, commercial photographers for weddings to, to do something over the event garden permit, as well as the wedding, the entrance or exits as they're going into the, uh, um, to the pavilion. That, to me, makes a lot more sense. The North Meadow is the place where people want to go for a quiet time, um, so I, I, I would change the location. Um, and, and I would have rather seen something more along the lines, do any official or additional work on the noise control. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Go ahead, or please. Um, I, 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 I think that my perspective is gonna be a little bit different. Uh, one, I think that if, the sound's annoying, and if I was a neighbor, I'd live next to an elementary school, and I knew exactly when it was quiet, so if somebody's gonna be, you know, flying something for, from sunup to sundown, I, I'm just gonna go postal, I'm gonna call the police department every five minutes, I'm gonna call George, and I'm gonna call every council member up here every time. And I think that that's going to be something that we're gonna have to deal with, and I think that if we can regulate the time, is subjecting it just to the, uh, the Meadow. If it's a commercial interest, it's approved by George, and we limited the time, and it was in a park, and we had an insurance policy for all commercial photographers. I think that gives me a scenario, but I also think that also gives us the control of George, where it's going to be, you can give the limitations of your, uh, cause, you know, we have some beautiful features that, yeah, I guess if you were flying above, they might be beautiful photographs if I was getting married, who? But I, I think giving that regulation also with the timeframe may be help, more helpful and more consistent with what our concerns would be related to the park.
Mr. Lee?
Uh, okay, so I have a little bit different perspective. Um, I think first that if people want to fly a drone or a model airplane in their backyard, they should be able to. Uh, I, absolutely has to comply with the noise ordinance, and if they're annoying because it feels like there's extremely large mosquitoes hovering on your property line, then I, I guess I'd call the police too. But I'm, I'm not sure that's really a problem versus an evolutionary problem. Uh, I would, I guess I would err in letting people do what they want to do on their own private property, as long as it doesn't infringe the rights of somebody else's property. Uh, the park, for me, is a different matter. I think people enjoy our park because of its pastoral quality, it's a hybrid park, we have this pastoral area where people can go on walks and enjoy picnics with their families, and do, uh, quiet things, and, uh, if drones are becoming increasingly popular, which is why I think this is before us, uh, and other municipalities are deciding not to allow those drone advocates to fly their drones in, in, in those parks. I don't want to encourage them to come to our park by creating a space that enables them. Uh, so I guess I would be more inclined not to approve having drones unless they get a permit. If they get a permit, I don't really care, because I think we can manage that, the city manager can certainly manage that. And I would be more inclined to give more flexibility on the permit than, uh, I think you've offered in the ordinance. Uh, in particular, I, I agree with what Councilwoman Lewis said, which is, if somebody's gonna have a wedding, and they want to have a drone, and they want to, you know, they're obviously gonna want to get a, uh, above view, uh, view shot of what's going on, it makes no sense to limit them to the North Meadow, but I think that in the permit process, we could manage that. And I can imagine other reasonable uses that aren't really gonna bother people, maybe they're, you know, during the Little League, uh, playoff game, somebody wants to get an above view shot, and that's perfectly reasonable to me, but I, I don't know that we need to allow that to happen without a permit. The permit process is extremely easy, you just ask for it basically, and give a model number. Um, and pay a fee. I guess, I mean, if, if, if I'm off on that, I, I don't want to create a burden.
No, there would be, there would be an associated fee for time and resource.
Yeah, you guys have permit processes for a whole number of things, and this would, this is.
So, thank you. So my personal opinion is that in the park, in our public area, um, I would like to limit the use of drones or any other kind of model aircraft to licensed pilots that, um, are registered, and that we know are gonna be flying these pieces of equipment uh, for a short period of time, for a purpose, and, uh, because, I mean, I've seen my kids, you know, fill one out of the box and try the drone. I mean, there's a learning curve, I mean, they crash it, and, you know, they, you know, fly it, and it goes over the fence or whatever, I mean, and I just, I, I just don't want that to be going on in our park. I mean, if we can regulate so that it's not open to everybody and anybody who has a drone out of the box to go to the North Meadow from dawn to dusk and fly around, I would like to regulate that, and I would, uh, like to regulate that we, the use of drones for commercial photography purposes. Uh, they have to, you have to get a permit, and it has to be for a purpose, and for, um, specific, um, period of time, and it's just at the park. And what you do in your backyard, it can be problematic, uh, and if it, if it becomes problematic, then we'll hear about it, because then the police will get involved. Um, I think that it's the smaller lots, I mean, just like the chicken ordinance, I mean, you, it's not reasonable in a smaller lot to think that you're gonna have drones, you know, flying around.
Sorry. You're bringing us back.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, I'm not sure, we've got a lot of, of contradictory, or at least, there's obviously work to be done, and so that everybody's issues out. For, you know, personally, it makes sense to me that we require permits, and then I'd like to avoid, or I'd like to stick to really bright line things that we can enforce, that's kind of what I like about a permit. If somebody's on the park, they either have a piece of paper or they don't, and you don't have to worry about a lot of other issues that have been attached to that. Um, I also would love to see what the park and rec, they thinks about this, I don't know what's, we've approached them yet, but I, I, I think it's important for them to get input, because I'd like to know whether there, you know, there, there are reps out there, let's hear what they say about the use of the park, and whether the North Meadow's the best place or the worst place. I also, it, it sounds to me like we have some time that we are projecting an issue out before it gets here, which I think is great.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we have time to put it through the park and rec committee, and have some more conversation at the council level, so that we can clarify these, these kinds of issues. Is that, you agree?
That sounds great, yeah, we can do that, um, when it comes to the park, would it, and the permit, it sounds like that's a popular way to regulate it. Would you allow model use, or would it only be the civil, more trained, commercial operator? Prohibit all model use in the park?
I think we may have, that's something worth talking about, that's what I'm hearing, we may have a disagreement on that right now.
Okay.
I think the park and rec committee would.
Help with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good suggestion.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Any, uh, reports or other comments? Not, I would have to, I'm sorry, is this for you?
No, I was gonna say, I've got all my reports for the last twelve months, I'm a binder, I'm gonna submit, as I know all of you are doing.
So, uh, you may have read in the paper, uh, that the SBWMA has chosen not to renew the hazardous household pickup program.
Yeah.
Uh, everybody's getting a card in the mail, um, and the purpose was, the, the reason was that they wanted a mandatory five-year contract, and the cost was gonna come close to doubling, so. Um, we s- we also, in our county taxes and in our disposal fees, we're paying for the county's hazardous household, which is for, so we've asked the county to, um, work with us to come up with a way of possibly having, uh, like we have our compost giveaway, uh, and electronic, uh, recycle program here that maybe the county could come here and, and, and do a pickup. They do regional ones, uh, annually, um, there's one that's scheduled in two thousand seventeen, both in Redwood City as well as in, uh, Menlo Park. And we've asked that they make sure that all jurisdictions know where they are, so there will be opportunities for us to bring paint and things like that, without going up to Tower Road, but you can go up to Tower Road with an appointment anytime, but, so that, um, that was something that we were paying for out of our reserves, um, but, uh, I think it's safe, that's what I'm, I'm.
Agenda.
We, we do have, I'm sorry, I guess we, we have, our future agenda, I have a suggestion from Councilwoman Lewis.
So, um, I would like to explore and understand more fully how we are, uh, handling any Airbnb listings in the town.
There are.
Yeah, we know that's not true.
Why don't we?
When we found it, we had it shut down as a business.
I think this is a future agenda item, so why don't we get that into the case, that's a medium report. One last chance, everybody, the public who has not commented, comment on any issue. Not to bring it back, and I'm, I'm sorry.
May I just make one quick follow-up comment?
On which issue?
Um, what you said, on any issue.
Okay. You ready? You got, think quickly, we're wrapping up, so we'll be back, yeah.
Okay, just very quickly, um, Councilmember Lewis, you had, um, just, just getting back to the issue, I just wanted to clarify something. You had said that we should find out what, um, whether Caltrain agrees with us or not. And the purpose of going through the eighty-one day process of issuing a notice of intent, soliciting comments from Caltrain, California Public Utilities Commission, Union Pacific Railroad, et cetera, the FRA, was to give everybody the chance to comment, and then we formally had to address all comments and respond. After that sixty-day period, we addressed everything, after that, no, we heard nothing back, no one said, I disagree with you. Not Caltrain, not the FRA. So they agreed with our, um, the response that we made to their formal comments. After that, the sixty-day comment period is over, we issued the notice of establishment, we said that twenty-one days from now, on June thirteenth, at twelve oh one AM, the quiet zone will be established, and it was, and Caltrain honored it, and there was no blasting through the station, because I was there monitoring, kept a record. There had been none before, there was none after. And, um, and anything that is done within Atherton Station must be done at all other stations within the Caltrain corridor. And I frequently take the train from the Palo Alto Station next to University. And if you've done that, you'll notice, not only are there no train horns, there is no pedestrian bells, not, there's none that ding 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 at a hundred and five decibels. Why is that? You hear no horns, you have no audible warning. There is a sign, there's an electronic sign with a screen saying train approaching, that gives you the train number, et cetera. Why do you hear no audible warning? Because it is not adjacent to a public highway rail grade crossing. The sounding was for Fair Oaks Lane, there is none at University because it's grade separated. So I just wanted to say, that, the time for that has long since passed, that was six months ago, and I just wanted to finalize the, you know, the natural process, thank you.
I would entertain a motion, do you think?